Okay. We are going to call this meeting to order. Just want to begin by reminding everybody that this meeting is video and audio recorded and will be placed on YouTube at a future time. We're going to begin with 1.1, and I'll ask Ingrid to lead us off, please.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. In the presence of a God whose word has called the stars into being, we stand in awe. In the presence of a God whose arms have held children, whose eyes have sparked with laughter, we stand in trust. In the presence of a God whose spirit has stirred a new awareness of gifts within us and caused our hearts to thirst for love, we stand in need. Before you, gift of life, we come in faith in search of love and truth and wholeness. Be with us, hear us, we pray. A reading from Paul's first letter to the Corinthians. For just as the body is one and has many members, and all the members of the body, the oh many, are one body, so it is with Christ; for in the one spirit we were all baptized into one body, Jews or Greeks, slaves or free, we were all made to drink of one spirit. Indeed, the body does not consist of one member but of many. If the foot were to say, because I am not a hand, I do not belong to the body, that would not make it any less part of the body. If the ear were to say, because I am not an eye, I do not belong to the body, that would not make it any less a part of the body. If the whole body were an eye, where would the hearing be? If the whole body were hearing, where would the sense of smell be? But as it is, God arranged the members in the body, each one of them as he chose. If all were a single member, where would the body be? As it is, there are many members, yet one body. Then I cannot say to the hand, I have no need for you, nor again the head to the feet, I have no need for you. On the contrary, the members of the body that seem to be weaker are indispensable, and those members of the bodies that we think less honorable, we close with great honors. And our less respectable members are treated with greater respect, whereas our most respectable members do not need this. But God has so arranged the body, given the greater honor to the inferior member, that there may be no dissensions within the body. But the members may have the same care for one another. If one member suffers, all suffer together with it. If one member is honored, all rejoice together with it. The word of the Lord. Thanks be to God. We are the body of Christ. In one spirit, all of us were baptized in Christ. The body is not one member but many. If all the members were alike, where would the body be? When all the members are concerned about one another? When all the gifts of each member is deemed indispensable? When all suffer with one member who is suffering? When all are honored, when one member is honored? When we work together as leaders in the school board? When we meet and plan together for our future? As we work with one another in unity and trust? Guiding Spirit, you have given us the seeds of your life, the seeds of our life, seeds for the lives of others. Help us to open ourselves to your nurturing hand. Help us to be open to the growth we receive from others, and to teach us to see the ways we can help others grow. Guide us today in our listening, learning, and decision-making. We ask this grace through your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
All right. Welcome. We'll also have Chair Rabenda call in during the action items of this meeting. 1.2, there were no motions adopted in camera. 1.3, there were no information pieces received in camera. Number 2, approval of the agenda. Could I have a mover for the agenda, trustee Danko?
I'd like to make a notice of motion.
Okay. That will be added to 10.8. Now could I have a mover of the agenda with 10.8, please? Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Carabella. All in...
The name of the motion?
Oh, the name of the motion, excuse me.
2018-19 budget.
Okay. Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder. Could I ask all in favor? Okay, opposed? See, none, it passes. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest? See, none, we'll move on. Number 4, there are no presentations. Number 5, delegations. There was one declined delegation that's listed in your package. 5.2, I would invite the delegates to come up and present to the board. Please, yeah, please come and just put the microphone on. Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Kelty, and I'm a grade 11 student at St. Ignatius of Loyola in Oakville. First of all, I would like to thank the board and the trustees for having me and for allowing me to speak today. It really means a lot that the board is willing to hear and take into account the opinions of the students, so thank you very much. I'd also like to thank you for all the work that you do on a daily basis for this board. It is much appreciated. Lastly, I would also like to thank everyone who came to listen to the delegation today and also the board meeting in general. Thank you. I'd like to start off today with this. The decisions we make today will affect our tomorrow. The decisions that we make today will affect our tomorrows. That's a quote that I heard from a speaker at the Diocese of Hamilton Youth Rally about a week ago. And it's actually really interesting how many areas in which that can be applied. If someone decides not to do their schoolwork one day, they'll face the consequences in class the next. If someone decides to stay up late, then they'll be tired the next day. If one decides to apologize to someone, they may find the relationship with that person is more repaired the next. But especially when you're in a position of power, does this apply? Because for every decision that you make today, it will affect all of our tomorrow. Growing up in a family deeply rooted in faith, I've always had a certain set of values and things that I believe to be true. Don't lie, steal, be jealous, hurt others, swear. These are all things that as loving and good people, we should avoid. They're all things that seem obvious, and that's because they are. They're all also things that are deeply rooted in the Ten Commandments. One of the very pillars of Christianity. They're all also things that we do for the other person. Because we love the other person, we don't swear at them, we don't lie to them, we don't steal from them, we don't hurt them. A golden rule of Catholicism that we learn all the way back in kindergarten is love your neighbor as you love yourself. As Catholics, Catholics, we're all called to love and respect all those around us. Everything that I've just said is also what it means to be pro-life. That may come as a surprise to some of you, but really, at the core of the pro-life movement is love. Because we care for and love our neighbor, we don't want any harm to come to them, no matter how small they may be. For me, being pro-life isn't just about attending events, speaking to others, or opposing abortion and assisted suicide. It's about a mentality that I live by day to day. It's about treating the other person who I've sat down next to, who's just glared at me for no reason, with kindness, respect, and love. It's about caring for the other from their conception all the way until their natural death. About doing what God calls all of us to do. But of course, it's also about the work that I do and the differences I can make. Things like going to the March for Life that I attended about a month ago. Things like speaking to you today. You know, the very first time that I attended the march in grade nine, there was a speaker that said something truly profound. I can't remember it exactly, but it was something along the lines of that when he dies and goes to heaven, he believes that Jesus will reach out for him, welcome him, and ask, "What have you done for the weakest of your brothers and sisters? What have you done for the vulnerable, who can say nothing for themselves? What have you done for my father's children, whose time came before it even started?" How can we as Catholics say that we give to the less fortunate? Say that we donate to help those in need, when some of the places that we donate to harm children as much as help them? We need a better option. How, as a Catholic school system, have we let it get this far? So far that there are students being brought up in our Catholic system that will openly discriminate against faith-filled peers? When I was in grade three, I was invited to a Christmas party. At this party, there was one point where all the kids were running around screaming, and the mother of the girl who had the party was trying to get everyone under control so we could go upstairs for pizza. No one would listen. No one would give this woman the time of day. So I stood up on the sofa and I shouted, "Hey, we're supposed to be celebrating Christmas. Is this what Jesus would have wanted?" And everyone stopped, stared at me for a second, and the girl whose party it was said, "Oh, shut up." And everyone went back to what they were doing. I've noticed in three years of high school that people are scared. Pro-life students are scared to say that they're pro-life because they want acceptance from their peers. As Catholics, we're called to love and respect life. So why is it that acting according to our faith is so unpopular amongst my age group? What currently sets us apart from the public or private school systems? What makes us different? Why do we exist? Faith. The answer is always faith. The one thing that all of us have in common is the religion that we follow. So I say, take pride in being Catholic. Make decisions and come to conclusions that are supported and encouraged by Catholicism. Set a strong and inherently Catholic example for students and staff to follow. Don't be flimsy, be courageous. Each one of you is here not because the people are ashamed of you, but because they believe you and you enough to vote for you, enough to pick you. There's another side out there, another voice that's begging to be heard. As a Catholic, pro-life student, I come before you today to represent that side. This is me putting my hope, trust, and faith in all of you and the conclusions that you come to as our elected Board of Trustees. The decisions that you make today will affect all of us tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Do trustees have... Thank you very much for coming out tonight, and do trustees have any questions that they would like to ask of the delegation? Okay, nope. Just trustee Carabella.
I just want to start out by thank you for coming, Kelty. You mentioned here that, just to clarify, you mentioned that sometimes as a pro-life student, you feel openly discriminated against and afraid. What sort of examples would that be?
So, just as an example, back when the board was talking about the different charities, there was a student in our school who put up some posters that were very incorrect and also very negative about the pro-life movement and people who support it, and in turn, that kind of sparked some definitely angry people, even though the posters had misinformation on them, both about the board's initiative and also about the pro-life movement in general. And I was actually in religion class one day when a boy started talking about how terrible all pro-lifers are and how he wanted to start a pro-choice club to combat us, and just how terrible it must be to have that point of view. So that's one example that comes to mind.
Thank you for sharing.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, and we will respond to the delegations in the first act. Thank you for coming. And now I'd invite the second delegation, 5.3, concerned for the Catholic Church and Catholic school boards to come forward and delegate. Welcome.
Good evening, trustees and others. My name is Father Terrence McKenna. I will be presenting one half of our presentation, and on my right is Sheri, Sheri Rybor, who will present the second half. And the inspiration for our delegation comes from the lady on my right, Madalena Pignatarie. Thank you, trustees, for arranging this opportunity for delegations to voice their support for the Sanctity of Life motion. As practicing Catholics from the Archdiocese of Toronto, with children enrolled in the Toronto District Catholic District School Board, we feel called to help uphold the moral and social teachings of the Catholic Church in Ontario. In the Archdiocese of Toronto, in Cardinal Thomas Collins' statement of April 11, 2018, regarding the Canadian Catholic Organization for Development and Peace funding, he states in part, "We will be withholding our 2018 allocation of funds to CCODP until more information is provided to the Canadian Conference of Catholic Bishops." How many of you think more information, perhaps more education, is needed to make the best decisions on this issue of selecting charitable organizations which you will allow to receive funds from your schools? The Sanctity of Life motion displays leadership in calling schools, parents, teachers, and students to ponder and apply Christian criteria when making decisions. Our Catholic faith creates awareness of the forces that influence us with half-truths while also urging us to be wise as serpents and innocent as doves, from Matthew 10. A lack of transparency from some charitable organizations can cause other worthy beneficiaries that focus on gospel imperatives to be neglected or overlooked. Did you know the Canadian Cancer Society directs 45% of donations toward marketing In comparison with Share Life, which is what we call Shareland in Toronto, with Share Life, but 7% of donations go toward fundraising. In the Cancer Society, only 51% of donations go toward programs, of which 39% are grants, while in Share Life, 90% of donations are allocated to programs. Most people do not know that the Catholic Church is the largest charity in the world that feeds the poor. What does the Canadian Cancer Society mean when they say they are committed to embryonic stem cell research? Who has their commitment? Who demanded that commitment?
If Cardinal Thomas Collins considers in 2018 that more information is required before funding is continued, maybe there's a lesson here for us as well. Is it time for us to equally require more from each and every organization requesting monies, including better transparency, in what areas they are involved? We are God's greatest care as Christians, and Scripture tells us in Psalm 56:8 that God puts our tears in a bottle. And here's a thought for you. What about his tears for his people? We don't know what's on the other side of too late. Maybe too late to take back a poorly made decision. Let's be thoughtful, mindful, and informed with the help of the Sanctity of Life motion before we move too fast through this process. Charity comes in many forms of currency. The Church teaches that true charity is announcing the gospel and responding to the spiritual, mental, emotional, and physical needs of persons. Charity is not only giving food and material things, but giving God too, because the main lack of man is not having God. That's from Pope Emeritus Benedict XVI. Let's not compromise. Let's not compromise our faith, our values, our morals. Let's not compromise who we are, and most importantly, let's not compromise whose we are. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Do trustees have any questions for clarification of the delegation? Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Thank you very much for coming tonight to Oakville, to Burlington, to join us. I'm wondering if you brought these concerns about student fundraising policies to the Toronto District Catholic School Board, and is their policy currently supported by Cardinal Collins when it comes to student-generated fundraising?
Well, no. It was this board that has really brought the story to the fore. On the way by, on the way to come here, we drove by one of our Catholic schools that is announcing support for a society that we could not agree was ready to be supported. So you are the pioneers, and we're here so that you will take the steps that will be an example for Ontario. an example for Ontario, Canada, and beyond.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming as well. I had a question about one of your slides. The fifty-one percent of donations go towards programs, of which thirty-nine percent are grants. Can you explain that to me? I don't understand.
Well, yes. These are figures from their website. So, what's concerning here is that beside the low percentage of funds that actually go to the work, thirty-nine percent of those funds are grants that go to do we know where. And ought we be finding out who they are, and what their commitments are, and what their mores are? That's a mystery.
Nick Carabella.
Thank you. I also have a follow-up. Would you say that for all charities that could potentially have harm, that there's always a charity alternative that is compliant with our faith and morals?
I don't know that. I have not studied that. But whether there are or not, the way that we love is to bring information to the fore that may be unwelcome or inconvenient, but necessary for our future, as our younger sister mentioned earlier.
Any further questions? Trustee Danko.
Chair, through you to Father McKenna. Thank you for your delegation this evening. I just want, the founding of the Share Life organization, I think it came about in the 1970s. Can you give a brief reason why the Archdiocese of Toronto founded that organization?
Yes, it was founded by the late Archbishop Philip Polcock. Now, he was a fun-loving man. His favorite way to spend time was to be smoking a big cigar and laughing. He was not someone who was looking for a fight, looking for conflict. But at that time, up until that time, the United Appeal, as it was known then, had been an organization that we could accept as doing good and only good. But at that certain point, it came to the fore that they were now financing organizations that would purvey abortion. So, it was very hard for him because he wanted to be a unifier. He wanted to be a principle of cooperation and harmony. But he said, "We can no longer let our people feel they are compelled to support the United Appeal with this new information that we have, that they are soft on abortion. So, I guess what we have to do is start our own parallel set of services for the community, whether it's for seniors, or for counseling, or for people on the streets, or for marriage counseling, or children at risk. We will have to start our own set of parallel organizations so that Catholics and others have an option when they are in need for direction. And we will have to support it by adding further partners to Share Lent. And so, we will call the new campaign Share Life, to indicate that we are continuing with the participants of Share Lent, but adding the new set of partners that we need in our Toronto situation."
Thank you. Any final clarifications? Okay. Thank you very much for coming, and we will certainly be just a few minutes until we get down to eight point one, which is the response for delegation. So, please stay for that if you like. Okay, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes. Would someone like to move the minutes of May 15, 2018? Trustee Carabella.
I just had a comment. Do we make the comment after the minutes are moved?
Oh, we can, yeah, let's move them and put them on the table. So, trustee Intomasi, were you moving them? And seconded by trustee Tritz, your comment?
I was just, it's referring to section eight point seven, and also the motion that was adopted in camera. It says that no motion was adopted, but I remember Vice Chair Marai that you did read, in fact, a motion that deals with then later on, eight point seven, trustee code of conduct. And I just was thinking that it's about the sanction of trustee Marai, but it doesn't state...
Sorry, I don't know.
Oh, sorry. Michael. And it doesn't state what was read out, what the actual sanctions were. And I thought that would be important to have in our minutes.
Okay. I think there was something read in. If we can just add that, would that be, that make sense for everyone? Is there a consensus on just adding that item in? Okay. Any concerns? Seeing none. Oh, sorry, trustee Quinn, please.
Just to confirm then, through you, Mr. Chair, we're going to add the actual language of the censure that was voted on and approved in this meeting. Because I know I had attempted to alter it, and that was defeated, and that is noted, but it's not noted what the sanctions were.
Can we just, would it be okay if we just look back at the video and just verbatim what we put in from the YouTube? Just, would that be fine? Does that work for everyone? Okay. Okay, great. Yeah, well, no, I think we have consensus on that. If everyone's okay with it, we can pass it with that change. All in favor? Opposed? Seeing none? Okay, that passes. So, now we're moving on to seven business arising from previous meetings. There's a summary on page thirty that you can take a look. And we're going to go to eight point one, but if you can just give us a moment, we're going to pause and just get Chair Rabenda on the line, so she can also vote on these items. So, we are just on eight point one of the action items. We just started them. Eight point one is response to the delegation, so I'm just going to read out what we usually do for this. In accordance with policy I-06, delegations to the board, trustees may move a motion to, one, make a decision on the presentation at the same meeting; two, refer the matter to a future meeting; three, request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting; or four, receive as information. So, we'll open up the floor to any trustee who has a motion regarding these allegations. Trustee Intomasi.
To you, Mr. Chair. I would move to have it included in information with the rest of the report that's going to be coming from staff at, I believe, our next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second or for that motion? Trustee Rowe, discussion on that motion. Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Mr. Chair. While I appreciate the efforts of the delegates today, we did have a closing time for the information to be received for this process. So, I don't think that's the way to go. I think we should receive it as information. Everyone around the table has heard the delegate's presentation, but I don't think it's fair that we had a closing date and then we have additional, because that'll open up the gates to other additional information coming in. So, I think we should receive it as information with tremendous thanks, and we've all learned from it, but it need not be part of the package sent to us for the consultation period.
Does anyone else have further comments on trustee Intomasi's motion? Okay, seeing none. Oh, trustee Carabella.
Well, I was in agreement, I mean, with what trustee Quinn is saying, because it is available in our board package. It's available for the public, and to honor the deadline, it's probably best.
Okay, so, okay. Any further comments? If not, we'll take the vote. So, this is a vote to, sorry, do you have a comment? So, this is a vote to receive as information also added to the package. Trustee Carabella.
Just one thought, though. When these were submitted, it was on, it was before the date. It was submitted, weren't they submitted Thursday, June, Thursday, the 31st? According to our board policy, they would be submitted.
Okay. So, trustee Quinn, are you fine with? Okay. So, then let's vote on trustee Intomasi's motion. Do you have the language for that? Okay. So, I'll go around the room. So, trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Ingrid.
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz.
In favor.
Chair Rabenda.
Outstanding.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Christina.
In favor.
Trustee Rowe.
In favor.
Anna Maria.
In favor.
And trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Okay. Trustee Tritz. Great. Okay, it passes. Okay, so, thank you very much for that, and thank you for your delegations today, and also thank you for everyone who's interested in this topic for coming out today as well. Thank you. If you'd like a moment to leave, but you're more than welcome to stay to hear lots of items about long-term capital plans. So, we'll just give a moment for the room. Okay, terrific. We're now going to move on to action item eight point two, 2018 Long-Term Capital Plan. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustees are presented with the final 2018 Long-Term Capital Plan for Approval in Principle. Also contained within the report is the outcome of the survey, as well as staff responses addressing the points that have arisen. And Fred will be walking you through the presentation tonight, and trustees will be requested to vote on approval in principle.
Just before Fred, before we begin, I'll just ask for a mover to put it on the table. Anyone, trustee Tritz, seconded by trustee Intomasi. Perfect. Thank you, Fred.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we just want to give you a brief presentation in regards to the Long-Term Capital Plan. So, predominantly, what we want to do is just we'll reiterate again where we're at today. We want to speak a little bit towards the community survey that we went out, some of the things that were discussed within the findings of that survey. We'll talk about staff responses to some of those questions and how they're being addressed in the Long-Term Capital Plan. And then finally, we will end on the recommendation, the same that was presented at the last staff report, which I think was the May 1st board meeting. Well, here we go. So, the interim report was presented at the May 1st meeting, so that's where the initial recommendation was placed. And again, this is for an approval in principle. Any other further action coming from this would require board approval, so that's the commencement of a PAR, a Bound Review, or any such thing. So, today is the day that we're bringing it forward for your consideration and approval. So, we circulated the survey starting on May 15th, and we ran it all the way to May 30th. We received a total of eighty-eight responses at that point, and we had two open-ended questions in the survey as well. Others were just to provide some baseline data to know exactly where the constituency were coming from. So, some of the baseline data that we requested was who would they best associate themselves to. So, as you can tell, eighty-two of the respondents were parents, guardians of Health and Catholic District School Board students. Four were staff members, and then we had a couple from the local community and the general public. In terms of distribution, we had a pretty good distribution throughout the entire region. Predominantly, it was Burlington and Oakville that saw the most respondents, about thirty and thirty-one percent respectively, and then Milton and Halton Hills, about twenty percent each. Otherwise, there was another respondent that I mentioned that were outside of the Halton region, but would still like to comment. In terms of themes, there were a number of themes that ranged from Bound Review, Accommodation Review, Renewal Programs, Utilization Pressures, some agreement and support, and some facility enhancement as well, among others. So, here's the graph as to the distribution, what these themes were. Do note that they are all attached to the board report tonight as Appendix B, if I'm not mistaken, as Appendix B, and the actual questionnaire itself is attached as Appendix A. So, with regards to these, I'm just going to go through some of the themes as to what was brought forward in terms of subject matter. So, one of them is always, and it's very well related to this Long-Term Capital Plans with regards to new projects that are being proposed by the board to address enrollment pressures. So, we saw a lot of that in the high-growth areas right now of Milton and Halton Hills, especially South Halton Hills. And there's also discussion around some replacement facilities in certain areas. So, as the staff response to this, as we discussed within the Long-Term Capital Plan, is we continue to make submissions to the Ministry of Education on high-priority projects and try to find innovative ways to address some of the accommodation issues. Again, we'll continue to monitor enrollment, as well as use Bound Reviews as a method to rebalance students and make sure we're not overbuilding, or make sure that we can address over-under utilization when appropriate. With regards to pupil accommodation reviews, there were some comments as to some schools that some of the constituency thought should be either closed, consolidated, or updated, if anything. There were questions about certain areas in the Orchard Community of Burlington as to whether or not, given the enrollment trends, this will be looked at. Really, at this point in time, it's a little bit premature, and as you've noticed in the Long-Term Capital Plan, we're not proposing any PARs at this time. Again, there's a provincial memorandum in place, and we'll continue to look at opportunities to rebalance these enrollments where feasible. With regards to school boundary and program reviews, there were some mention as to some concerns as to overcrowding, or potential to relocate certain programs that are causing some of these pressures. So, again, a lot of the ones that we were looking at are in Milton and in Oakville, as well as Halton Hills. So, again, staff continues to review options as to where we can rebalance some of these enrollments and reduce some pressures where it's feasible. As you recall, we started a process as part of the new Bound Review policy that, on an annual basis, beginning of the year, will advise trustees of some potential Bound Reviews that may be undertaken during that year. And then there was also some concerns as to what some of the impacts of these Bound Reviews would have if they're consistently done, or done too frequently. So, again, we're always trying to do what's best for the student and try to minimize the amount of impacts that are happening. Last but not least, there's also some discussion around some of the schools that are housing the French programs, whether it's Extended Immersion or the Early Immersion Program, how they're starting to overcrowd schools, especially those that are housing both. So, now that the French review is completed, now staff can start looking at, you know, is there some opportunity to start relocating them and not concentrating too much on one particular school? These things can start being reviewed. Renewal needs and things of that nature. So, again, this falls a little bit outside the Long-Term Capital Plan. We've advised of some of the facilities' plans in terms of renewal works, so some of them are, you know, indicating that they would like to see some renewal works at their schools. And we continue to look at areas where we can renew certain, areas of need, and then we target those over time. There was, again, the mention of looking for alternative solutions for Holy Cross, so we'll continue to try to explore methods on this and try to find ways to address this board-wide. You'll notice a common theme with the Halton Hills piece. There were some questions about how we can utilize some of our, sorry, how we can occupy some of our underutilized space, and there was also some questions regarding what our board policy was on community facility partnerships. So, again, within the framework of the Long-Term Capital Plan, as well as our policies and procedures, namely, policy I-37, our community planning... Seven, our community planning and facility partnership, um, you know, what we're trying to find, who can we house in our schools, all, while all being synergistic to the board's values. Um, so again, as, as you all know, we go out on an annual basis to our community. If you may recall, I think it was May seventh that we went out to our community to say not only what our, our areas are that we could accommodate some partners, but also we advise them of the Long-Term Capital Plan. So again, there was al- also other programming. The gist of this one is that they're always saying, like, can we find some program enhancement and introduce them in our schools? Again, we always try, um, academically to, to make sure that all students are receiving the best possible program and learning opportunities while maintaining that Twenty-First Century Learning Standard that we're striving for. Um, in terms of enrollment projection methodology, a few of these questions came up as to, you know, why certain schools are, you know, how we under-projected certain schools that have high, uh, uh, high utilization or high use of portables, and then some concerns around mature communities and how we don't, how, how do we track, uh, turnover in the neighborhood? So, um, with regards to overcrowding or portable use at schools, again, we don't ever want to build, and we explained this in the Long-Term Capital Plan, and it's in the FAQs too, that we don't want to build to peak. We want to build to sustainable yield so that we avoid having underutilized spaces, and we avoid having to undertake some of these accommodation reviews. So portables are a way to manage the peaks of growth, and then eventually, when it's stable, it'll be in bricks and mortar. And again, with regard to mature communities, we're always looking to the past to, to project the future, so that's why staff continues to review the information that it has and the trends that it has, whether it's birth rates, whether it's, uh, you know, participation rates, and whether it's progression, progression rules. We're always looking at these on an annual basis and updating them to make sure that we're as accurate as possible. Last but not least, uh, some of them just didn't respond, and there, there were no additional comments, so there was some of that. Uh, there were a few respondents that mentioned that they had a little bit of, um, difficulties in navigating the survey. We do understand that this is a very, um, bulky document, and we're trying to assist with having the website as being a way so that they can better navigate it instead of having a, a large onerous document. So one of the enhancements we're already trying to make right now, so the goal is really that a community member can know what's happening within their neighborhood is to, uh, you know, further enhance the website. So one of the, the first enhancements we're looking at doing right now, and it's, it's almost underway, we just have a few tweaks, is, uh, where's my review area? Where a constituent can just put in their address, it will tell them what review they remain, they are in, and with that review area, they'll know what's the elementary school program, or programs and projects that are happening there, renewal projects, the secondary projects, and they can have a general outlook of what's happening there as opposed to having to navigate this document. So these are the sort of things that we're going to continue to, to enhance over time as we get more and more feedback, and we definitely want this to be, um, a document that empowers the community to know what's happening in their, their neighborhood. So with that said, um, I present to you tonight the, uh, the, 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 the twenty-eighteen Long-Term Capital Plan that's meant to supersede the twenty-thirteen Long-Term Capital Plan after its five years of being in place, um, and before you tonight's the resolution. Happy to take any questions.
Questions or comments from trustees, uh, Trustee Quinn?
Uh, our first question, and then perhaps, uh, another one after other trustees, but looking at Appendix B, the full list of responses by municipality, I count fifty-odd, fifty-three-odd responses, and it says the full list of responses, and then in, in the summary here, it says there were a total of eighty-eight responses, and I counted eighty-eight spots on the map that were received by the community. So are we missing responses, or do people not have comments? Because there's, there's thirty-odd responses I don't see.
Through you, Ma'am Chair. There are some areas that didn't have any comments. I think it was about fifteen that had no comments, and... I can double-check to make sure that this list is, is complete. We want to make sure that all of them are here before you tonight. So, so just as a point of clarification, is it this that you're counting, or is it?
Sorry, I was surprised by how low the responses, the, the lower amount of responses, and whether it's fifty-three or eighty-eight, it's a very low number, but just are we missing some responses from community members?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I hope not. I will count them and double-check, and if there are any issues, I will certainly report back.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So was there anything there that sort of jumped out at you that were interesting, little things, maybe not big projects, but little projects, that the staff could have a list of ten, you know, out of all this information that came, a, a work, a working list of ten smaller things? I just, you know, when I started reading it, the one that jumped out at me was the washrooms at Saint Paul's. You know, like little comments like that, how are they going to be addressed, or what, what plan do they fit into? Thank you.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. These are things that we, we can look at as being, uh, potential priorities. Again, there, there's eighty-eight respondents, and there's probably a, a wide array of projects that are happening specifically to renewal, so I can't quite comment on that one. But i- in terms of other short-term projects that the board is looking at, or that are entrenched within the Long-Term Capital Plan, if you look in the, the document, there's the, the one-to-five-year, uh, projects that we're looking to do, whether they're Bound Reviews, Renewal Projects, things like that. So if you go on the website, um, they are in a generalized list that can be reviewed, and that, that'll show like some of the, the priority areas. Um, certainly, a lot of these that were being discussed through the community members, they were in relation to, uh, overcrowding. A lot of it's in Halton Hills, and a lot of it's in Milton. So already, we're doing some of these things in terms of reviewing, uh, or constructing new schools, making submissions for new schools, so those are the, the larger projects. Uh, some of the other Bound Review areas, the Bound Reviews that are possible, they're a little bit more difficult. Like, I take Halton Hills, for instance, where we're all a little bit limited as to what we can do. We're almost maxed out, so we're really reliant on a larger project, and we're limited on what we can do in terms of small things. Um, other ones in terms of program realignments with, uh, FI and all that, we're, we're looking at that now. So those are some of the smalls that we can see, community by community, and we're addressing some of those right now. And they were part of the plan that we were looking at doing.
Superintendent Merrick.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we also presented our Long-Term Renewal Strategy back in September, uh, in Saint Paul's and Saint Raves, and those other Southern Burlington Schools were on the plan as well. Um, I think there was later for, within, I think it was twenty-twenty, if I remember, uh, was the year we had it on for renewal in those areas. Um, it is defined and, and constrained by the amount of staff we have and the amount of funding we have as well, so, um, we do have a plan for when we're going to get to those schools. It's much more cost-effective when we go into one of those schools that we do the whole school, top to bottom, as opposed to doing smaller projects, um, and kind of creating a mess and disruption in the school, and then coming back year after year after year. So we're trying to hit those, um, from an efficiency standpoint, to do a lot of renovations in, in one year. Um, and as well, we already have about ninety, a little over ninety million dollars in new capital, or new construction and renewal on the books for, uh, this summer and next school year. Um, so we're, we're pretty well tapped out, uh, for this year, so, um, but we do have, uh, other renewal stuff on the books for, for next summer and the next five years as well.
Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. So just to follow up, how would that parent know that, um, that that's planned for his school at that time? What's our communication on that?
So it is in our, in our board, uh, in our board reports, and it's on our Long-Term Renewal Strategies, so.
Uh, Trustee Quinn, did you have a, you had a follow-up? Yeah, please.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I, I was tremendously impressed with the, with the work and the detail of the Long-Term Capital Plan, and, and thanks to Fred and, and the team for putting it together. I, I'm glad it is in principle that we're approving it, though, because each of the decisions that will be made will be come, come back to the, the trustees, either this board or, or the future board. A- and philosophically, you know, my, my, my question, since, since I've been a trustee, is what, what is the, the plan for growth here at our board, and why do we grow? Is it to serve the Catholic great payers and their families and, and the children from those families, or is it to provide the traditional one-third of the school spaces shared with our co-terminist board and the public board? So a- as we see declining number of students coming from our feeder schools, and we're building, how many people, how many places in a high school these days, two thousand? Jean Daniel, how, how, how many students?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our standard would be between fourteen to fifteen at this point, or recent builds.
Fifteen hundred places, but only maybe a third or, or just under half are actually coming from our Catholic feeder schools. What is the philosophy behind growth as we, as we continue to, uh, to develop as a board? So that's my philosophical question I think the trustees should, should look at as, as staff come back to us in the future. Thank you.
Uh, Director Dawson.
Just, just a comment, uh, on Trustee Quinn's, um, we have very high retention rate from our own Catholic elementary schools. Um, I think what you're quoting about thirty percent is that we also receive, uh, admit students from the public system, uh, to our secondary schools, upwards, in some cases, of thirty percent. But generally, uh, ninety to ninety-five percent of our elementary school, uh, students graduating go to our Catholic high schools. Just, just to...
Other questions or comments? Okay, seen none. We'll, uh, we'll call the vote. Diane, you're still with us?
I am.
Okay, do you have any questions or comments?
No, no, it's all, it's right, 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 we're telling it.
Excellent. Okay, so I'll call the vote. Uh, we'll begin with, uh, Trustee, Trustee Quinn.
In favor.
Uh, Anna Maria.
In favor.
Trustee Roe.
In favor.
Christina.
In favor.
Uh, Trustee Danko.
In favor.
Uh, Chair Rebenda.
In favor.
Trustee Tritz. Trustee Tomasi.
In favor.
Ingrid.
In favor.
And Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Wonderful. So that passes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah? Now that this is passed, could I request that staff, um, send a copy of this to all the Halton, um, MPPs as soon as we know who they are?
Excellent idea. Okay, uh, so we'll, we'll, i- if, if there's a consensus on that, Fred, please go ahead.
Further to that, just advise the board trustees. So the intent right now, uh, with regards to our Long-Term Capital Plan, we will send it, we will add that to the list, but we will be sending it to all the municipal clerks, the regional clerk, um, as well as our co-terminist boards as well, anyone who shares jurisdiction with us, and we can certainly add the, uh, the MPPs as part of that list as well. We just want everyone to know that this is here now.
Great idea. Great, excellent. Okay, uh, now moving on to nine point one. Uh, Diane, would you like to stay with us, or are?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm gone for the night, so I'm going to go.
Okay. Please feel better, yeah. Okay, great. Okay, uh, so we'll move on to, uh, staff items, nine point one, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget estimates, draft number two. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Trustees are presented with the second, uh, draft of the budget for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and Erin and Jay have prepared a few slides to go over the changes between the, uh, draft number one, uh, presented on May fifteenth, and draft number two in front of you today. Um, as trustees, we'll, um, be required to approve a balanced budget on, uh, the next board meeting, uh, June nineteenth. Any proposed changes should be identified today so that we have an opportunity to put them through our financial system, as well as the ministries, many, many forms, reconcile, and, uh, just go over everything a- and determine what the impact is to our system. So we would very much, um, uh, be appreciative if we have a, a full-time discussion today and identify areas that may be changing the budget as we move into bringing the final back for approval at the next meeting. Um, we were going to propose, if, is the will of the board to have a consensus on various items brought, uh, forth today, uh, including all the new initiatives that have been identified in the report that are not yet included in the budget, um, and if we could have some sort of, uh, discussion and consensus to get a feeling so the staff know what direction to take into the final, uh, budget. And the, the changes from now until, uh, the end, um, until the, the June nineteenth meeting may have, um, there may be changes with regards to some enrollment as we go and look at the, uh, additional registrations, and in case we need to update the enrollment, receive any additional grants that may be announced. We don't forecast grants. We do, uh, budget for them. They're budget-neutral. We budget for them as they are announced for the year, um, as well as, uh, as a result of, um, any discussion today. So I, I just wanted to, uh, provide the opportunity for Erin and Jay to walk you through a very short presentation of the changes. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as Roxanna said, this is a much briefer presentation than our previous one. I have a few slides to go over, though. Um, so just looking at our quick agenda here, we're going to look at the update since our last presentation, which was May fifteenth. Uh, we're going to look at our updated board financial position, the new initiatives like Roxanna, uh, spoke to earlier, as well as the next steps. So update since our last meeting, May fifteenth, about three weeks ago or so. So what has changed? Well, on the revenue side, we have about an extra hu- five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand in GSN revenue, or Legislative Grants revenue, and that's related to an additional seventy-two forecast enrollment at the secondary panel, um, for average daily enrollment increased by seventy-two. Education program, other, uh, this is what Roxanna mentioned earlier before, an additional grant, and this is going to be a neutral grant. So a hundred and six coming in in revenue, a hundred and six going out in expense. A small adjustment to our secondments of about two thousand dollars. And finally, as agreed to or voted on last, uh, at our last meeting, we have seven-hundred-thousand dollars as an estimated cost, um, for the assumption, um, Catholic secondary school, uh, retro proj- or, sorry, project. Now, on the expense side, what additional expenses do we have? Well, we have an extra five-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand as a result of adding four additional secondary school teachers. This relates to the additional seventy-two AD that we spoke to earlier. We also have an, one additional prince, uh, vice principal in one of our Milton schools, and two additional early childhood educators to address, uh, address enrollment growth. We also have an increase of a hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand for supplementary employee life and health trust benefits and transition for non-union staff. That was a salaries and benefits portion. Now, we also have a non-staffing section, or a portion as well. So we have an increase of eighty-nine thousand for professional development related to the EPOs, and we also have seven-hundred-thousand dollars as the expenditure for the Assumption Catholic Secondary School renovation project. So our total expenses equal one-million-four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. So as a result, the net change is ninety-six thousand or so as a negative from where we spoke to last time. So how does that, um, what does that look like in terms of our financial position? We're looking at our, our top line, our in-year change, our operating surplus. We have a change of four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand. So this is where you would see the ninety-six-thousand-dollar difference or so. At our last presentation, that was five-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand. Now it's four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand. There's our five-hundred-thousand dollars. You can see our next line, again, looking at the in-year change, the middle column, five-hundred-thousand dollars as an operating reserve, which was the same as it was at a previous presentation. Our capital reserve, our next line down, for five-hundred-and-fifty. This was one-million-two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in our previous presentation, but as a result of the will of the board in our last, uh, last meeting, we are allocating that seven-hundred-thousand dollars we spoke to earlier to help with the Assumption Catholic Secondary School renovation project. And then the remaining items there are the same as they were, um, in our last presentation. So the net result of all the change is a one-point, almost one-point-two-million-dollar change year-over-year, uh, increasing into our closing balances. So new initiatives. These initiatives were the same as spoke, as we spoke to at our last presentation, and there is the list that Roxanna mentioned earlier as far as, um, looking for consensus from the board on these items. And again, they're listed in no particular order, um, so there's no precedence placed, or sorry, preference placed on, on the way it appears right now.
So just in summary, we are in, uh, surplus position of one-point-two-million for, uh, available for compliance. Um, and currently, we have set aside half a million dollars to the working funds reserve, and just over half a million, so five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in the capital reserve after the assumption project. Uh, we also have an operating surplus that hasn't been allocated, of four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, um, and, uh, any additional changes that may have, uh, may result from today will impact, uh, this disposition.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that, and I think, um, we heard loud and clear you'd like some discussion, uh, discussion on this, so, uh, let's, let's, um, hear from trustees as to their thoughts and, uh, other, you know, and ideas. Uh, Trustee Danko, then Trustee Quinn.
Uh, Chair Mariah to the treasurer. Uh, so you have the operating reserve there. Um, what are the ministry guidelines around the amount that should be kept in an operating reserve? Is it, is it two percent? Is it one-point-five percent? What are the ministry guideline, expectations around that?
The, the ministry guidelines, uh, for the, uh, starting in eighteen, nineteen, have been revised from one percent to two percent, uh, as, uh, a guideline to, uh, contain in our operating reserve and maintain our low, um, risk from a financial perspective. And we are well underway, so our budget objectives have been to transfer a minimum of five-hundred-thousand every year over seven years. That allows us to address the needs of our growing system within, also still being the lowest-funded board. system within, also still being the lowest funded board in the province. So, we, we wanted to do that gradually. There, at the end of the year, there will be balances up and down, and as we try to be as efficient as we can with our funding, for example, last year, it was more than what we have budgeted. So anything that is left at the end of the year will go into this reserve. So that, that has been historically the trend, and we're trying to build that to a two percent, which will be roughly about just under seven million or so. So we are above the one percent points right now, moving towards that two percent.
Trustee Danko, follow up?
More question for clarification. So when you say from one percent to two percent, is that the four point six million in the operating reserve? That would be about one point one and a half percent? Is that, is that the number, the four, forty-six, forty-six?
Yeah, so the closing balance is where we expect to be at the end of the year, at four point six percent, oh, sorry, four point six million, and that is approximately, I believe it's a one point three percent or so of our, it, it's not part of, it's not based on our total budget, it's based on our provincial allocation, which is about three point, pardon me? So three point eight million, so I guess, yes, just over seven.
Okay, so just, so just to clarify, then, that number should be approaching seven and a half million dollars at some point?
Right, yes. Now, the, the, there isn't, it, it's not an exercise to be done, obviously, in one year, but it is our goal over the next five to seven years.
Trustee Quinn, you had a question?
Thank you. Perhaps we could look at table four, as, as this is described, require new initiatives that are to be discussed at the June fifth, twenty eighteen meeting, that's today, so perhaps we could hear a little bit more about the non-union job evaluation review, the officer involved in that review, and what this investment will lead to. Will it lead to cost savings, or will it lead to, to further costs if we review the jobs and find that everyone needs a raise?
Superintendent.
Thank you, and through the chair, as trustees will recall, these two initiatives were on as new initiatives in the last budget cycle. Essentially, we are overdue in terms of doing a thorough job evaluation analysis for our non-union staff. Those types of reviews should be done every five to seven years, and we're certainly within that, that window. What that would mean essentially is that we would be bringing in an external consultant to go and take a look at all the non-union jobs, update job descriptions, and evaluate them based on a gender-neutral tool. That also makes sure that we continue to be pay equity compliant. We would also be undertaking a market study to go and make sure that, in fact, we remain competitive with other boards and employers in the area. The job evaluation officer essentially would be there to, again, it's a contract position to assist in the collection of all that information internally, and to assist in making sure that we land that particular project within the timelines. Happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Superintendent. Trustee Quinn.
Thank you, through, through you, Mr. Chair, still on table four. When I'm looking at the budget for new music equipment, it's forty-five thousand dollars, seems like that wouldn't go very far across our, our school. I'd, I prefer to see that two hundred thousand dollars going into new music equipment, so I'd like to hear from the curriculum services what the forty-five thousand dollars is aimed for, and would more money going there be, be welcomed?
Who would like to?
Through the chair, thanks for the question. With regard to the new music equipment, that budget is to begin an instrumental music program in one of our elementary schools. In order to qualify for an instrumental music program, the school has to have an existing teacher that has the qualifications in music to run the program, so increasing that budget would not necessarily facilitate the introduction of instrumental music programs at more schools, and the budget to date has been quite adequate in fulfilling our replacement music materials, et cetera. So that really reflects one school's interest and the formation of one instrumental music program band at that particular school, so that's what the forty-five thousand dollars reflects.
Do we know how many teachers are able to teach music at our elementary schools who are currently not teaching music?
Very few. We have perhaps one or two that may not, that have their qualifications and are not teaching instrumental music, but they are teaching the arts and teaching music, but not necessarily an instrumental music program. So there has to be a submission of interest from an elementary school that they want to have an instrumental music program, and that's what this reflects. We've had a school express interest, and so we've put forth a request for the additional monies this, for the next term.
Superintendent.
And this is in addition to what's already in the budget, that we, we currently have these programs running at the schools where we are able to have the qualified teachers, and they continue so, or they follow a teacher in some cases, if that may be the case. So we haven't reduced that budget, it's in addition to that, so it's, it's just the addition of one more school.
Further questions or comments from trustees? Discussion, trustee Danko.
Chair Marai, through you to the treasurer. So the new, would the new initiatives be funded through the op, by use tapping into the operating reserves? And that's one question. And the other question is, the list of new initiatives is shorter today than it was a couple of weeks ago, so I think, are there a couple of line items not appearing that appeared earlier?
So to trustee Danko's first question, yes, it would be funded through the operating surplus that has not yet been allocated. Any difference will go into the operating reserve from there. So there's not additional funding provided for these initiatives elsewhere in the budget. And to your second question, this is the same as it was at the last board meeting, but you are correct, that is different from the one originally presented to trustees, I believe at the March seventh session, and perhaps that's what trustee Danko's referring to. We did have on this list the, the human rights and equity advisor or officer as a new initiative before the announcement was made that it is a funded position. So it has been funded through EPO, and it's, it's budget neutral. As a result, it has been included in our staffing enhancements table.
funded a hundred percent or fifty percent?
So the, there's two parts of funding. One funding is for a half, and then there's an additional well-being, an increase in the well-being, safe and accepting schools, EPO, that allows to bring it up to one full FTE, and some additional funding left over.
Okay. Further, further questions? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So table three, the program enhancements, and I think you just referred to one. Here it's collapsed a little bit, it just gives the final line. Could we see those expanded, the number ones and two, what it actually is again, to see what it is again, that we're enhancing?
So, um.
Or is it available?
We, we could bring it up on the May fifteen report on the board website, Erin, it's probably the easiest. So it was provided at the last meeting. The reason it was collapsed in here is just to show there was no change to it. I'll, I'll bring it up myself, and I can walk you through it as we go through as well. So as part of the, part one, program enhancements, we are looking at fifty-one thousand dollars in the director's office for contingency, increase to the director's contingency for legal fees, privacy and information management, and operating costs. There is one point three million increase to the facility management, the operating of schools budget. Now, this is offset by three hundred thousand into the staffing, so really the net to our bottom line would be a million, it's just that this part here doesn't include sal, salary and benefits. So we divide our costs into departmental, operating costs, and salary and benefits. So that one point three million is to account for increasing costs in terms of utility, maintenance, and supplies and contractual services, and a growing system. The two hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been an increase to the school budget and the, the contingency for school budgets, and the, the part of it is, if I'm looking at it, I think, if I remember correctly, a hundred and fifty thousand is an increase in the school budget due to growth, just the increase in enrollment, and the formula we use triggers that increase. And ninety thousand has been suggested, so about ten thousand per family of schools, increase in the school contingency budget so that we can allocate for the year based on school needs, or local school needs and interests, and not just a formula that fits all. So sometimes there may be something that comes up during the year, and a school may need additional help, and they would reach out to their family of school superintendent and request that. Part of that money was also to address a safe arrival software for our elementary students. I believe that was about forty-five or forty-seven thousand. Seventy-three thousand was an increase to faith development courses for staff, student injury prevention, and the alternative education budget, to address growth in that case. The new textbooks and library materials and other science and tech shop safety training and resources are the makeup of the two hundred and ninety thousand, so that's within curriculum services. A hundred and thirty-nine thousand are increase in license fees, softer license fees as per our contract, as well as eighty thousand of that or so was an investment in network security infrastructure, and increasing legal and professional fees of just a hundred and six thousand dollars have been requested as well. So that was part of what was discussed at the March seventh trustee session, and that's why we kept it as section one, just so we can compare what was presented then and what we added since. So part two is what has been added since the session. So in, in between that time, we received the student, the Halton Student Transportation Services budget, which was reviewed and approved by their Board of Directors, and it is increased by eight hundred and eleven thousand. That includes transportation for special education, transportation for optional programming, and transportation to provincial schools. You will also recall there, it was a four percent increase in, on the allocation side for that grant, as the ministry did expect that the costs are going up for transportation. We are still looking at a deficit in the transportation allocation of about six hundred thousand for the upcoming year, so the increase in, in revenue didn't quite make up for the increase in costs. The three hundred thousand dollars have been an addition to fees and contractual services as a result of our review of the contracts and as they relate to the Employment Standards Act, in particular, the minimum wage increase, and we need to address that, it's been legislated, so it is a cost that we can't avoid, that is an estimate of our analysis. And the temporary accommodations of one point five million, a big bulk of that, well, our growing system, and a big bulk of that is the assumption busing for one year. And it should be noted, all of that funding is available through an allocation that you only receive if you do spend it. Being a growing board, we do receive, so that allocation has actually increased from about one point seven, one point eight million current year to just over three point three million next year. So, to the extent that we don't spend all the money, it goes into a deferred revenue for future use as we need it, only for the purposes of temporary accommodations. So that's a budget-neutral item there. It is a big number, but I do, I do want the trustees to understand it is a budget-neutral item. So that is the bulk of the four point nine million dollars increase in, in terms of program enhancements that we have put forth. I'd be happy to explain anything further.
Table, so those are new initiatives, and then table four are new initiatives on top of that?
So the, the program enhancements in table three, they are required increases due to expected expenses that we need to incur as we operate, as we grow, you know, mandated for legislation, if we have to increase minimum wage and things like that for contractual. So the program enhancements are already in the budget. The new initiatives in table four are not.
Right. Just to, just to clarify, though, like, some of those I understood from your comments are, like, required by law, for example, the minimum wage increase, versus one where we, ones where we say increase the legal and professional fees, temporary assistance, and department cost to address growth on human resources is, you know, probably advisable by human resources, but is not required by law. Increases director's contingency budget and privacy and information management and operating costs, again, maybe advisable by the Director of Education, but not required by law. So those could be broken out potentially?
Absolutely, so they're not all required by law. I will say that if we're looking at our costs, legal and costs in particular, we surpass that. We could say, no, we're not adding a hundred thousand to legal costs. That doesn't mean that if we do need to pay the bills, we don't pay it because we're going over budget. So it is our best estimate in terms of what we are expecting based on all the changes that we see and all the prior trends. So that's the reason, they're not mandated by any means, but when the bills come in, we do have to cover for them.
Questions, comments? Trustee Danko.
Through you, Chair Marai, to the treasurer, is the new staff position, the administrative staff position, sorry, is the new position an administrative supervisory officer, officer staff position?
I'm sorry, is it the, the human rights and equity advisor an administrative position? It, it comes with very specific qualifications, so when we do hire, it has to have professional qualifications.
Thank you, it comes through the chair. The position likely will be coming in at a senior manager level, so it's not coming in as a supervisory officer level, but it will be a senior position, and it's required to report directly to the Director of Education, and working with all of the various departments on sort of defined initiatives that, that we have from the ministry. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Trustee Danko.
Just to further clarify, is there a job description imposed for that role?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We are working with, the ministry's helping us develop the job description because there is some legal background required, so we're all working on that right now. We don't have it yet. Ministry's coming.
One, one more. So if, so if there's no job description, does that mean no other boards have this position, or, so are other boards going through the same exercise right now?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Toronto Region and Thunder Bay Region are the first round, and then the next wave will be the remainder of the boards next year.
Okay. So, a lot of good questions. So to further the conversation, so from looking at this, looking at the new initiatives, do trustees have specific, you know, changes or wants, or, you know, here that we could talk about today versus surprise you guys on June nineteenth?
And just, I guess, as a, Mr. Chair, item ten point seven does relate to this discussion, so if trustees have any questions or clarifications, we could address either separately or the same, on the same topic.
With the public feedback.
The staff's survey.
Staff's feedback, yeah, from hundreds, yeah. Okay, trustee Intomasi.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Could perhaps Roxanna, just kind of a quick, if you, if you went through the new initiatives, scale of one to ten being, you know, most important, least important, and/or how urgent? So if you kind of rank it as how urgent is it, if Mr. O'Hara does not get this evaluation review, what does that do to the overall operation of the HR department? I mean, if, if we keep putting things off, because I think we've deferred this once before, if we keep putting this off, what does that? if we keep putting this off, what does that do to the daily functioning of the, of the department? It's great to say, well, we don't want to have to spend it, but, um, my concern is sometimes we, we defer things. I mean, we all do it in our own household. You defer something thinking, oh, well, that can wait, that can wait. And next thing you know, you've got this big thing that comes swooping in on you and you're going, okay, we, maybe we should have done that. And so my concern is that we don't get too far behind on job evaluation reviews, that, you know, we're not, that we are being negligent in looking after, you know, housekeeping that needs to get looked after.
Again, thank you. And through the Chair, we are already behind, uh, with respect to job evaluation reviews and we do not have the staff in HR to do the work in-house. Uh, it is work that needs to be done. Uh, we, we do have requirements to go and make sure that our, our jobs are up to date, that, uh, they, that we are paying based on a job, uh, a gender neutral tool and that we are pay equity compliant. There's been significant changes in many departments in terms of how business is done. There has been, uh, more responsibilities added to various positions and there is a significant backlog in terms of our ability to look at jobs and make sure that they are evaluated appropriately and compensated appropriately. Thank you.
Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, perhaps back to the, uh, Human Resources Department. Are, do we have any new initiatives or increases in the attendance support, uh, initiatives? I, I'm wondering about investing money where hiring staff will actually end up saving us money rather than hiring staff that could end up costing us money. So have we put any, any increase in attendance support into this budget?
Uh, again, through the Chair and thank you for that question, trustee Quinn. Uh, as trustees will recall through the interim budget, uh, trustees did approve, uh, the hiring of an additional attendance support officer. That person has been hired and we are certainly ramping up, um, our conversations, uh, and our meetings to go and make sure that we're doing what we can within the parameters and the limitations of the collective agreements and the central terms, et cetera. So we, we, we did, uh, get additional funding in that area, um, more recently. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Okay, I have a, I have a few since you want feedback from, from, from the board. And sir, did you have a, trustee Danko?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'd just say that I'd rank the budget for new music equipment as number one on the list.
Right, okay. Uh, just, just to the points you brought up, um, a couple items I'd bring up on June 19th would be, I'd want to see, I think this goes to trustee Danko's question about where we should be headed with the operating reserve. I think we shouldn't wait eight years to get it up to that level, uh, 500,000 per year. Nor do I think we should do it very quickly either by, by cutting, but I think we, we should see a larger in-year change. Um, you know, I'd support something that would get us there within, you know, four years, so a, a million. And I think you can do that quite reasonably by looking at the new initiatives, picking some, not choosing others, as well as looking at the table three, uh, program enhancements and saying, you know, I think you made a good point where you said legal fees, well, sometimes they're caused by decisions, uh, of the board, for instance. And, uh, so maybe we need to look at that really critically throughout the year, uh, as we're making decisions to make sure we stay within that budget. But I don't think we should just keep increasing, we, we just keep increasing the, um, the amount, um, just to cover, uh, cover ourselves. And I, and I also think that, um, there are other areas in table three where we could put less money in and try to find more efficient ways of, of, um, of, of dealing, uh, with it. So, um, you know, I generally agree on the, the, uh, music equipment. Um, and I, and I think some of the other new initiatives, uh, can be, uh, can be taken off. I think that it makes a lot of sense for us to grow the operating reserve, especially in this time of uncertainty provincially and how, uh, funding formulas are going to look like. So I, I, there is massive investment in this, there's massive investment in growth in this budget, which is great. It's great for the community. It's in millions of dollars. It's caused by growth of our, of our population and we should be investing in our staff. Um, but I think we need, it's, it's also easy to put, it's easy to put things in place and it's harder to take them away later if we're required to by the province. So my only si- my only suggestion would all be speaking towards, uh, on June 19th, would be just for a slightly larger operating reserve and taking a look at table three and table four to reduce, uh, some of those numbers. And I think that's a pretty moderate approach. Um, and maybe that, I don't know, anyone who has any comments or on, on that? Superintendent O'Hara?
Thank you. And, and if you could indulge me, I, I would like to speak to the Electronic Files Project uh, because it is a very important initiative. Uh, trustees have asked staff to go and look at ways of increasing efficiencies and looking at ways in which we can, you know, become more productive and, and, and create cost savings. And, and the Electronic Files Project is one where if we do not look at getting, um, you know, upgraded software and be able to move to, again, a more paperless organization, we're going to be left to the dust and we're going to end up having to hire more staff because we are inefficient. We continue to grow as a board. We're hiring more staff all the time. We have more issues. We need better processes, internal processes to be able to, uh, to control our data, to be able to sort our data, to be able to go and store our resources. This board, this building is busting at the seams. There is no space to go and put files. We need to move into, into the times where most organizations have, have the ability to have electronic storage and, and, and have their paperless fi- paper files turn paperless. It, it, it is a cost saver. It, it, it's money well spent and it's needed. Thank you.
Just on that point, um, interestingly enough, through our survey, a lot of it was printing, spending money on printing. So this is a one-time investment. So I, I guess we should probably mention, they're not all reoccurring on this table. Uh, the, I'm referring to table number four of the new initiatives. So the, uh, electronic file, most of that is a one-time cost. Um, so it, it's putting it in, the implementation cost of purchasing the scanners and the licenses. So the operating budget is, um, I believe it's a very red, pardon me? For the, the, um, uh, electronic file, uh, project is, that mostly about 90% of that cost is a one-time. So it will result in savings in the future and perhaps we should be looking at finding efficiencies elsewhere, maybe the printing budget, um, y- you know?
To, to that point, to that point, and, 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 you know, maybe you can't recoup the investment and we're only talking about 100,000 dollars, but you can't recoup the, recoup the investment over one year. But ma- maybe you should look at the budget and say, this year, we're going to, we're going to recoup 20,000 of that and reduce the, so I think if we saw things like that too, maybe some of these new initiatives would be palatable so it wouldn't be 110 increase, uh, in it. It would only be an 80 or 90 because you're reducing it in other, in other places. Um, and I, and I think that's a, a reasonable approach, uh, to take. So if that's, maybe it take away if people, if, if the trustees agree? Uh, trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. On that, that file storage, there are recurring costs. If we're going to store it on the cloud, there's increased data space that we need or if we're going to have servers internally holding on to this data, they have to be secured and redundancies. So I don't think 110,000 dollars covers either one of those, uh, aspects. So can you tell me what the ongoing costs will be for this project as opposed to finding storage in the basement somewhere?
Storage in the basement is a lot more expensive and unfortunately we, we're running out of basement space. Um, the, the, the cloud is relatively inexpensive, um, cost. We are expanding always with the new technology and with schools and as we grow. So this isn't going to be a cost that will, I would, um, associate a big chunk of that just for this project. I would have to look into it to come back with details on in terms of the cloud. But I, I can tell you, it will save us a lot of, uh, uh, not only, uh, costs in terms of printing, but staffing costs and efficiencies where we can redirect them and focus elsewhere where there's more need in, uh, in terms of, uh, priority tasks and then filing, you know, running paper and filing paper. And we are speaking about, uh, this being a board-wide solution. Um, we do have a lot of paper and it's about time that we move away from it. Um, there's no doubt about it. It will save costs in the future.
Please, Director Dawson?
Through you, Mr. Chair, just to add on to Roxana, uh, for every box that we have of paper, uh, stored in File Bank, it costs us money and it's every year. So yes, there's two costs, the cost in the cloud, but also the clunkiness of paper and storing it off-site. I also wanted to address another item on the new initiatives and that was when, um, our system librarian came to speak to us. And trustee Quinn, you asked, um, Mr. Millard what would be helpful. So, uh, a new library system is on our, uh, is on our list as per what you asked him. Also, additional commissioners in our schools, uh, to support, um, supervision, uh, in our hallways. Uh, mostly at secondary, we don't have commissioners in elementary. So just some of the things that, uh, we asked for, under half a million dollars in new initiatives. And certainly we can, uh, we can look at the program enhancements, take it back. Some of them are directly related to our audit findings when it came to the security infrastructure, um, new textbooks, anything that goes right to the classroom, uh, we, we want to make sure that those are, uh, supported, number one.
Further questions, comments? Uh, on this, trustee Carabella?
Don't request for new textbooks come to the board table anyway. So this is like projecting their need.
So further comments, do, do trustees just want to take it verbatim, not make any changes whatsoever? Do they want to see changes, uh, for any of this? Do they want to see modest changes to this? Do they want to see significant changes to this? Go, go, please.
What I, I would suggest for consideration is if you give us some idea of what you're looking for. So is it that you're looking at, so right now we're, we have, um, so we have a total of almost a million dollars that can go into the operating reserve as it stands right now. So your top line, 485 plus the 500 in the operating reserve. That's the available money, uh, outside of the new initiatives. If we get a sense that you want some of these new initiatives in, is, is the direction to find internal savings elsewhere where we could take a look at to make room for that and then maintain that almost, you know, increase the 500,000 dollars to, I don't know, 750, 800 into the operating reserve? What is the goal that the board is trying to get to? Uh, we would appreciate that, um, guidance today so that we can, and then which ones of these fall off the, the table, uh, um, right now in terms of the new initiatives and which ones you're considering to include if there are savings and, and, uh, come back to the table on the 19th with some sort of solutions. So that would really help in trying to go and dig through and figure out, do we defer certain things? Um, do we look further in terms of, uh, some of the expenses that we've, we've budgeted for to try to make room? Um, and some of them just perhaps are not going to be, um, approved. So then let's take them off the table.
Okay, trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. And I think I, I want to echo what trustee Marai said. Once things through the budget, it's hard to get rid of them. And if, if we're looking for 500,000 dollars in new initiatives, could that money not be found with decreases in other departments where it's been approved in the past and they just continue merely along their way? And have we looked for those savings as a way to fund the new initiatives rather than saying, well, let's just add on to, to our budget every, every time?
That's an excellent point. The exercise that we do every year and the numbers that you see in this table three is the net of that. So we're looking through, so for example, if I, I look at the Superintendent of Mary's budget and the, uh, growth and increase in costs, those are offset by considering, are we, uh, going to be operating new schools, closing schools, uh, consolidating schools? What are we looking for in terms of our rate for utilities? What are our contractual, uh, obligations? What is the requirements throughout the schools? What is the, uh, repair, uh, and maintenance queue and so forth? So all of that is being considered and then at the end of it, it, the exercise is to go line by line. So every depart- every superintendent receives their budget and they go line by line to identify what is recurring, what can be saved to be allocated towards other needs. And then the net of that is what we have there. Can we look, go back and look into it? We could definitely take another look if that is a direction. We just need to sort of get an idea where we want to end up so that we know our working, uh, what goal we're working towards. Uh, the other point I want to say is that we do have these budgets set up. We try our best to stay not just within the budget, but if we can, under budget by the end of the year, to find efficiencies as we go. For example, with NIT, we will bulk our purchases. We know we need all of these, but we'll bulk them one and get efficiencies. All of those we can predict ahead of time. They are done as we go through the year. So there's a lot of those types of exercises through the year as we try not to spend all the money. And as a result, the, the last couple of years, our financial position at year-end was better than what we had predicted. So we are, um, conservative both at budget as well as throughout the year. That is our goal for the year as well. It's not just, here's the money we have, let's spend it all because we've got the, the funding. So the, the expenses that we get, unless they can not be avoided, so there are certain bills we have to pay, we take a look and, and, and we want to make sure that we stay under budget as we go through the year as well.
Trustee Quinn and then trustee Danko?
Just as a follow-up, then I think, I, I don't know what trustee Danko's motion is going to be, but having seen him in past budget sessions, he's, I think he's going to be asking for some sort of reduction in, in the overall spending. So I, I'm wondering if, uh, uh, how thorough those, those reductions in spending are from the, from the budgeting planners as they don't have a mandate that, that the trustees have. So it, does it require the trustees to say, reduce the budget by 1% or 2%? Or have you found those efficiencies and can you show them to us in, in a, in a real way where we don't have to say, go back and find 1% and then the response is, well, then you're going to cut the kids in the classroom? And that, and that's not the argument we want to have?
So, the budget before you is our best analysis with the information we have to date. It is what we propose. Going back and cutting costs is not what we propose. We can take another look. It will mean deferring certain things. So deferring expenses, deferring maintenance, deferring, that's the nature of right now, uh, cutting costs. I cannot go and say, so there's in- increases that we've put through both in departmental as well as in benefits and changes in legislation. We have certain analysis behind it that supports the numbers, trends and so forth. We are conservative. So when we do add costs, we are conservative in adding them. We don't just increase budget without having a good analysis behind it. These are the best numbers we have with the information to date to go for. So I, my recommendation as treasurer would be to go with these numbers. Um, you know, look at the new initiative, determine what, what may go in or not go in. Uh, we, we're taking another look at revised estimates and we're always looked at not just having a balanced budget, but having a surplus and continuing to build that surplus. I wouldn't recommend, uh, a big change. I, I don't know if, if trustee Danko wants to share his motion. I don't see why not, uh, as we discuss the budget. Um, the budget is approved as a whole and not through motion throughout the process. So, um, you know, i- i- that's why I'm saying if you have a target in mind as a treasurer, I would, I would like to know what we're working towards so that we can determine what are the deferrals that we are looking at.
Trustee Quinn, just a follow-up and then we'll go directly to you?
Were any staffing, uh, reductions considered or, or, or approved in this budgeting?
We are a growing system, so there are no staffing reductions. Um, there are a lot of staffing additions, 100.8 or so. Well, we, we recently just added another seven. So it's all, it's 108 staff. Uh, most of them, uh, are within the, the teachings, elementary and secondary teachers. Uh, the other ones are directly funded for additional areas like the, um, pathway, uh, teachers for, uh, elementary, uh, level. Um, there's eight of them, uh, Um, there's eight of them, uh, for, for success into, for elementary students going into, uh, grade nine. There's a lot of special education investments into the system. There's three point six million dollars in special education resources that have been added. Uh, uh, some of them are for growth, some of them are specific funding that has been approved. Um, so, no, there hasn't been any staffing changes. There's actually additional funding for additional staffing that has been provided. Uh, the staffing additions, the one hundred and eight, have been funded through growth, specific allocations. All of them, with the exception of one, as I've mentioned before, is the IT supervisor for se- for security. We had requested that last year as well and in fact reduced the IT bu- departmental budget to make room for it. And then it was decided that none of the new initiatives go through. So, the IT budget had been reduced and started at that level this year, but that position wasn't added last year. Um, that is the only one that does not come with funding. Uh, any staff that we would want to add that doesn't have a corresponding direct funding comes on the new initiatives. We'd never add a staff without board approval unless it's mandated that, or directly funded through various grants.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Danko.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Marai, to, through you to the treasurer. Um, my question is, uh, so for example, you said the management position that's reporting to the director's office, isn't it new? It's something new, but it's not a new initiative per se. It's, um, funded, so you're not saying that that, I mean, are there other things like that that are in the budget? That are growth items that, that we can't see here, that are like that, that we can look at? Um, you know, secondary teachers, elementary teachers, you know, those are prescribed positions, we, we need those due to growth. Are there other things like the manager that's going to report to the director, other things like that that we can see? That you're saying are budgeted for, uh, and then I, I can let you know what, what I do have for item ten point eight.
Uh, thank you, Trustee Danko, Mr. Chair. So, this, uh, table two was provided in last, uh, report, so it, it identified every single staffing and the funding that covers for it that we've added to the budget from the current year to next year. So, we have ten elementary teachers for growth, that's based on enrollment and, and, uh, teaching ratios, so class ratios that are mandated. The elementary pathway itinerants, the eight, have been coming with GSN funding, so they're fully covered through additional funding. Once the, the, the funding, the allocation is in the GSN, the commitment is in legislation, it's permanent. Unlike, um, an EPO that may be in temporary nature and then in the future put into the GSN. The, um, special education resource teachers are growth, so four, uh, have been requested, um, and in consultation with the, um, CAC committee. Um, Superintendent Brown has, uh, and his team have requested for, uh, special education resource teachers to address growth. Uh, and then the experiential learning consultant has been covered through a new grant, uh, in most part about point seven, uh, of an FTS of seventy percent and growth through the remaining for student success. So, the student success grant allows for that.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, no, respectfully, not, I, I'm not interested in knowing that the positions that are prescribed by legislation. I understand that teachers and are prescribed by legislation and those are, those are all fixed positions. What I want to know is what is in the budget that is not prescribed by legislation, specifically those?
So, specifically those, um, so we have the special education resource teachers not prescribed by, uh, legislation. Um, so they're required of growth, i- i- for example, the child and youth counselors, uh, have been, uh, funded through the EPO. So, the ones that are for growth, it, there's a part of the allocation in special education that goes up. You can only spend it on these resources. If you go, uh, above it, it's part of the overall GSN. The GSN is meant to complement special education, so we do have a deficit in special education and we do so to address the needs of those students, but they're not legislated. Um, the behavior analysts, the EPO, uh, that was previously provided, has not, uh, been continued, uh, the, due to the needs for those positions. We have, uh, asked to put them through growth. If we go further down, um, EAs are the same. Um, school secretarial staff are, uh, not required, legislated, but we do have staffing ratios, uh, based on the size of the school. So, we follow those, uh, similarly with principals and vice principals. The payroll advisor, there has been additional funding provided, it's not legislated though, but there has been additional, um, funding provided for, um, all the changes that have been made in terms of legislation, uh, negotiations, labor agreements and all of that. Um, and we are a growing board, our payroll team has been relatively the same for a long time. So, I can tell you that a lot of times I leave the board meeting and upstairs I still have my payroll team working hard to make sure that everybody gets paid. Um, so, not legislative by any means, um, I would say needed. Um, and, and it is funded, so there has been an additional allocation that has been provided. Um, the, um, just looking, so the, the principal, same idea, it's based on the school, uh, size. There are staffing ratios that have been agreed and they're, they're built in, um, I believe, agreements with, with those positions, so we follow those. Um, the junior, uh, planning officer, there is, uh, additional funding that has been provided. Um, and we do request this position due to growth and due to the fact that we want to bring more work in-house and save on consultants. So, it does provide savings, uh, to the board, but it's not legislated. The finance officer is, um, a Thomas Merton, half of that is being covered through federal grants. Uh, and the other half is, uh, through growth of the con ed, um, programs. We have almost seven to eight million dollars worth of many, many, many programs and we need additional. And, and it's also as a result of an audit where, uh, the results of that audit clearly have identified areas where we could improve without going into detail. This is one of the recommendations that we've, we provide more support, financial support. IT supervisor for network security, not additionally funded, it's a current gap, not legislated. So, those would be, I believe, um, the positions, if we go down, uh, a little bit more, Aaron. So, the areas that we have here, we, so the new positions come with sal- salary increases as well as, uh, the respective increase in benefits. But there's additional benefits that we've included above and beyond a number for staffing and that is as a result of, of legislation with regards to WSIB and increasing the sums of the statutory, uh, benefits. So, so that's what, um, those are. You'll see there's also increase in staffing due to grid movement as well, five point four million. So, that's fourteen million dollars. This is your last report, so will be another six hundred and something thousand for the additions for draft number two to that. So, I would say it's about, um, fourteen point five million at this point and, uh, one hundred and eight staff. Um, I'd be happy to go into more details in terms of those positions, but in a nutshell, these are the additions, one to one in terms of staffing from our current position to what we propose for next year, every single one of them.
Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, thank you, treasurer, for going through that, um, that's very helpful. Is that from the, is that from the March, May, May fifteenth meeting? Um, and al- also to answer your question, um, my motion later on is, is, uh, which will be read. I mean, it's, it's only looking for an addition to the operating reserve of about two hundred thousand from what you have right now. So, up to four, four point eight million or one point two percent of the allocation. That's what my motion looks for. So, I'm open to amendments and it'll come up at the next meeting and given this information, we'll, we can talk more about two hundred thousand. I think that's fairly modest, so.
Mr. Chair?
Please go ahead.
Uh, may I make a motion to excuse the student trustees, they have culminating exams and culminating projects and exams?
Of course, of course. Uh, seconded by Trustee Quinn, all in favor? We're all in favor, okay. Good, good luck, no, good luck, please. Okay. Just wait a moment.
So, so my comment to that would just be, uh, I, I think, you know, it's better than, it's certainly better than nothing. I think that it's hard to save, um, it's, it's easy to spend. We don't know what the, uh, uh, things will look like, uh, with government funding in the future. Um, I think that, um, I think there's two things you can look at. I think, one, we can rank and staff can rank the new initiatives to help find some savings there. I think that, um, I think Trustee Quinn mentioned that, uh, staff can look back into the budget and see if there's any areas where there are savings as well. Um, and, you know, I'm also looking on the revenue side. One idea is we've reduced the tuition fees from the international program. I think that we should see that budget at least be constant for the revenue that comes in. Uh, and by increasing that revenue, we'll see a larger operating surplus. So, I agree with Trustee Danko's motion, you know, personally, I, I would like to see it be five hundred thousand dollars more, uh, to, to be a million. And I think, I think between, I think it's actually not a significant number for a four hundred million dollar budget. If you look at the new initiatives, if you look at a couple items in the new initiatives, which by the way, we'll gain here two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand. If you look into the actual budget itself for, for, uh, no, not for five hundred thousand, you, you also can look at table three and say, there are some areas that maybe we're helping, you know, fifty-three thousand for, for, uh, for, for lawyers. But I, I think, I think we should, we should look at all items, um, a- across the board to try to find. And, and if the, the trustees feel that two fifty is reasonable because they appreciate the new initiative so much, so be it. But why don't we look at this as, as critically as possible?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, a couple of other options that we can look at and is on the revenue side. So, costs are one side that we're going to take a look at and see, uh, what we can do and then perhaps, um, take some of those things out and try to do within the, our means and try to best accomplish what we need to do within that. On the other side, we can take a look and have, we've been pretty conservative in terms of rental revenues for our facilities, for example. So, they're steadily increasing every year. We don't tend to say, oh, we're going to increase them by su- such a percent, but we could take a look into it. I know there's, uh, a lot of work into that and, uh, promoting and, and, uh, so that's one area in terms of increasing revenue. And we can take, uh, a look at the, the international student program. It's something we are looking at continuing to grow. It, it won't be for next year and the reason is the, the way we, we, um, um, project enrollment is based on registrations. And by now, they should be in the systems and they should, the applications and we should know that we're tracking those students. So, to say, you know, let's add, for example, ten students and try to get them for September, isn't doable. We can put it down, it's not doable because of the way we're tracking. However, with all the, um, focus on the European market, for the following year, it's definitely one area that we want to, to increase. So, it is, uh, a point to take to the future and the next budget. Um, I can't, I am not comfortable increasing that number because I don't have the num, I don't have the people, I don't have the applications. And, uh, the recruitment and the marketing for this year has been done last year. Um, so that's one of the aspects in terms of international students. But we can take a look at increasing revenues throughout our, our other operating revenues. Um, maximizing interest revenue, minimizing interest expenses, um, and which, which we are doing anyway. We just didn't like to project, um, you know, high, because we, we don't need when we have a large purchase that we need to, um, spend on and not be able to keep the, um, uh, funding in the, for, in a, in a longer term in the bank. Um, so, we, we definitely can take a look into the budget and look at, at the revenue side as well. We, the, the other piece that we're doing still is the enrollment, so we, we will see what registrations we get. We are very conservative on enrollment and I, you know, I can say that my expectation is as revised budget, the enrollment will be higher than what we project. Um, so that, that's something to also look, look forward to. Um, so, Mr. Chair, with definitely, you know, i- we can take that away, is it two hundred, is it five hundred? Is it, you know, which ones of this? And, and I did hear, uh, a couple of times that, uh, the initiatives should be prioritized. Um, perhaps, uh, the director or my colleagues could suggest, uh, a priority, uh, for those so that we have an idea of what we're looking for in terms of additional costs in the budget.
Trustee Craig and then Trustee Tomasz.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and maybe you're the answer. I took it to me when you talked about the international students, that we can only market and get who wants to come, but what's our flexibility on charging more? Was that what you were talking about?
Uh, no, actually, just to clarify, in the past report, that's a, that's a great question. In the past report, we were told, uh, publicly in one of the, the bu- budget meetings, that we are turning away more and more of them, uh, which, you know, may make sense to ensure that we have the academic, uh, you know, quality of education we're providing to them. Uh, I, I don't, I, I, I think we obviously need to target that. I, I don't think we should be seeing such a steep decrease in, in the revenue on that if it's going to affect the new initiatives you would like to see. So, I would like to increase the operating reserves and I'd like to, uh, uh, try to keep the revenue from the international students program as constant as possible, Superintendent.
Sorry. Uh, a few clarifications on international students as Superintendent Nagoy has pointed out. The market, this is June, whatever students we are, have registered, we're pretty well going to have them. Uh, we've closed, uh, yeah, we are, they're trickling in, but there have been shifts in the international market as well, which, uh, I have brought to, to the board from the perspective that, uh, the patterns of different countries and that's why we've been trying, uh, over the course of the last few years to diversify our markets because the markets are changing. Government policies in different countries are changing and they're not, we're not getting the international students, not just halting Catholic, but across Canada because their governments are definitely closing the doors to their students leaving their country. So, that's one of the big shifts that is happening globally. The second one in terms of your question, let's just increase tuition fees. Well, we can't do that because then we will mar, we will actually, uh, get out of the market. We belong to associations, which I have shared with you, uh, in previous reports and that we are pretty consistent across this province in terms of what we charge for international students. If we all of a sudden jack our, our, uh, tuition fee by a thousand dollars or more or whatever, that will put us out of the market and it will be very difficult to recruit students. So, it's a fine balance, a finding, obviously, what is going to continue and we have to continue to market. What has also happened when we started international students and where we are today in this province, we have just about every board now in the market, which we did not have in the past, both Catholic and public and definitely, definitely private schools that are out there competing, knocking down doors and offering all kinds of incentives to attract international students. So, we have to stay competitive if we are going to get a piece of that market. We can't outprice the competition and say, well, we're just bringing more students and we'll jack up the price because that will leave us out, out of the cold. So, we hear you, we are working together and trying to diversify and get into other markets. Some of our investments this year, uh, in, in the European market, we won't see that until next year as we start doing registrations for September for eighteen, nineteen. It, it was too late, but you have to be out there marketing in order to get your name out there. So, we're hopeful on that. And the other pieces- your name out there. So, we're hopeful on that. And the other piece is we're exploring other possibilities with international students, not just the day sco- uh, the day program at secondary. We're looking at other possibilities as well.
Thank you for that. Okay. Trustee In Tomasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask Roxanne, and when you're doing, if you're prioritizing, if you could just sort of break out what's a one-time cost versus what's a ongoing cost, because I have a feeling that some of it's in here that might, you know, the one-time cost from what I can see might be, you know, maybe just a quarter or half of it. And then, so it, that, that does change what gets approved, I would like to think.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's actually, we tried to put that in there. You can see that the job evaluation has in the green, two hundred thousand one-time cost, uh, additional commissioners, forty-two thousand ongoing costs. Um, the electronic file, hundred and ten thousand, approximately half is ongoing, eighty-five thousand for the new library system is a one-time cost, and forty-five thousand dollars for the new music equipment is an ongoing cost.
As a correction, so if I'm looking at the, um, the, um, electronic file to Trustee Quinn's question, it's approximately half, but not of the, it's a, it's less than half actually, because there's some scanners and other items in there. They will come up for renewal at a certain point. So, it's not quite, it's fifty-five. Um, it's, it's lower than that. So, a portion of that is, uh, trying to get your fleet first and then, um, will be renewed every so many years.
Trustee Quinn, you had a question?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Can the treasurer remind me what the budgets are for the trustees on the annual basis? And perhaps we could start there with, uh, looking at cutting our own, our own and, and lead as, lead by example there.
Um, from memory, I believe you're, the individual, um, and I believe it's in policy as well, is three thousand for individual trustees and five for the, the chair. And then there's, there's a, a common budget as well. So, I, I do, um, believe it's just in excess of a hundred thousand overall.
If, if there was any proposed increase in this budget, I think we should not go there. And then perhaps look at reducing that, the same that we're asking the, uh, the other departments to reduce their budgets.
Okay. Trustee Danko.
Chair Marai, am I correct in seeing that electricity, uh, we're spending a million dollars more on electricity in the past two years?
Uh, why, why is that?
Utilities, electricity, twenty eighteen, budget estimates, page appendix B one.
So, B one has a number of things in it. It's, it's all the utilities, um...
Looks like it went from five point three million in twenty sixteen, and we're setting a s- we're estimating six point three million this year.
From five point three, um, there, there are, um, definitely, um... The five point three to six point three, yes. Um, not sure if Superintendent Merrick would want to discuss, but it is an increase in overall, the, the utilities overall.
Yeah. So, we, we are seeing big increases in, uh, cost utilities. Um, we work with, we have a, uh, I guess a consortium of, of various school boards in the GTA that we work on, uh, pricing projections for future years as a, as a group. Uh, and we have advisors that advise us on what they foresee for, uh, utility rates going forward, both like hydro, uh, water is one that we're seeing, you know, upwards of twenty percent increases annually. Uh, water is actually now our number two, uh, uh, cost on utilities. It's actually surpassed natural gas. Um, and the natural gas, again, it's been fairly stagnant over the past few years, but, uh, we are seeing big increases. And as we know, we do, um, we have, we have ten gyms across our board that are not air-conditioned. Everywhere else in our board, every square foot is air-conditioned. So, um, we're, we're a slave to whatever weather we get, um, you know, not only in, uh, in June and September, but also through the summer as we have a number of, uh, of community uses in our schools throughout the summer. So, um, they're all air-conditioned and, you know, we, we, we pay for that, um, that luxury. Um, but we do think it is a, a really good benefit for our students and improves the learning environment for them to, to make the, the environment, uh, uh, workable and, and a good, uh, space for them to learn.
To add to that, if we're looking at the revised estimates, it's, it's a two hundred thousand dollar increase. So, there, we, we are seeing increases this year as well. So, it, it's looking at the two-year span in terms of increases. Um, the, the flip side of that is that we also increase our revenues in terms of facility rentals. They're all captured through here, which is the reason why we try to have that two million dollars when we can, uh, moved into the capital reserve to supplement the school renewal. So, that's how the, that, uh, additional revenue, uh, um, is, uh, generated. The costs are incurred through our operating budget and we want to put that aside.
Oh, yes, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted to add as well that we are seeing our, our utility usage per square foot of building space that we have decrease. So, actual consumption is decreasing. Uh, and our, our, my, my team has worked very hard on reducing consumption. We have alarms, uh, a lot of electronic alarms now that we know of, you know, if a toilet runs overnight, we find out about it overnight and we, we're there the next day to shut it off, uh, as well as we have control over all of our facilities, um, uh, climate controlled from here in the board office. We can control, uh, air conditioning in all of our schools and heating in all of our schools. Uh, so, we are becoming more efficient using it, but the, uh, the utility rates are going up very quickly as I'm sure you've all seen on your, uh, your household energy bills as well.
Great question. Uh, okay. So, I think we have some takeaways, uh, both from the revenue side to increase revenue, also a ranking of the new initiatives. I'm just taking everyone's comments and trying to put them together. Uh, ranking of the new initiatives and trying to find more money for the operating reserve. Okay?
Very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to, I guess we're gonna skip ten point one because we've excused the student trustees. We're doing good work, I'm sure. Uh, ten point two, school educational field trips, Superintendent Overholt.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The, uh, trips are before you, the four trips, uh, on the report. Can I answer any questions that trustees would have?
Okay. Seeing no questions. Thank you for that. We'll go on to ten point three, HSTF, annual home-to-school transportation review. Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this report outlines the results of the annual home-to-school transportation review. As a result, there's one exemption that has been removed for Saint Catherine of Alexandria, uh, as outlined on the first page of the report. And there's two new policy exemptions that have been introduced for the new school year. One is for the town of Oakville for Our Lady of, um, Peace, and one is for the new school, Saint Scholastica in the town of Milton. And all the other exemptions that are currently in place will continue to be in place next year. Myself and Fred will be happy to address any questions trustees may have.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none. Okay. We'll move on to ten point four, provincial co- consolidation of school board financial statement accountants' report with respect to the seven-month period from September first, twenty seventeen to March thirty-first, twenty eighteen. Go ahead, please Superintendent Nagoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm sure Chair Rabenda is happy not to read that long title. She always gets me in trouble for, for my titles. Um, as of prior year, trustees will, uh, remember that we present you with the seven-month report covering the period of September first, two thousand and seventeen to March thirty-first, uh, which is completed for the purposes of provincial consolidation. The province's fiscal year runs from April first to March thirty-first. Therefore, they use five months of our prior year end and seven months of our current year. So, we've presented to you the auditor's, uh, report as well as the statement of financial position and the summary of revenues and expenses attached as appendices A, B, and C. And we'll be happy to take any, uh, questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none. Ten point five, student voice.
Uh, through the chair, presented for the informa- from information are the ministry-approved speak-up projects for the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year. Speak-up projects are part of the Ministry of Education Student Voice Initiative. They are projects designed and implemented by students to foster student engagement, providing excellent leadership development opportunities in our schools. As part of the report, you can see the list of schools, their project titles, and the approved funding. Just to highlight a couple of examples, Saint Andrew Elementary School undertook a makerspace project to design a community vegetable garden, and Jean Vanier Secondary School used the funding to support the eighth annual life skills prom with three hundred students, volunteers, and parents in attendance. And I welcome questions at this time.
Questions or comments from trustees? Seeing none. Okay. Thank you very much. Ten point six, uh, extensive trip advisory committee trip proposals. Superintendent Cipriano.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I present the information report regarding the E-TAC extensive trip advisory committee trip proposals, uh, that were approved by the, uh, E-TAC committee, uh, just about a month ago. Uh, there are four trips. All will be taking place next March, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, two will be run through the Thomas Merton Center and two will be, uh, provided through Christ the King Catholic Secondary School in Georgetown. I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Questions, comments from trustees? Okay. Excellent report. Thank you. Ten point seven, uh, two thousand and eighteen, twenty nineteen Halton Catholic District School Board budget, respecting taxpayers' summary of additional feedback. Director Dawson.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is a report, uh, that we are bringing back, um, based on the motion passed at the April seventeenth board meeting where, uh, staff was asked to, um, launch a survey to staff and the public with a goal of finding savings and efficiencies in the board budget. There were two confidential online surveys for parents and staff that were sent out between May eighth and May eighteenth. From the parent survey results, a total of three hundred and fifty-eight respondents completed the parent survey, and for the staff survey, a total of a hundred and twenty-five completed the staff survey. In appendix A of this report, it talks about the, the demographics for the parent survey, a hundred and twenty-five respondents from Oakville, a hundred and two from Burlington, seventy-three from Milton, and fifty-eight from Halton Hills. The common themes that were present in, uh, the questions were, uh, efficient staffing of school and board, efficient school operations, policy, reducing transportation costs, and limiting funds, uh, for trustees. Within theme one on efficient staffing of, of schools and boards, there were sub-themes. One of the ones in this area, twenty-three percent, uh, or sixteen percent said, look at, uh, school and board staff positions, including reducing pay and eliminating positions. Another sub-theme was to reduce teacher absenteeism, uh, reducing the need for supply coverage through limiting the amount of PD days or training held through the school year. Uh, under theme two, uh, under efficient school operations, one of the sub-themes was reducing printing costs. So, uh, try not to send so many flyers home, uh, printing of these worksheets or agendas or newsletters, managing consumables more efficiently, so budgeting allotted for classroom and school supplies to be less wasteful. Um, can, another sub-theme was considering the maintenance of schools and maintenance-related costs, increasing maintenance standards and efficiencies of school operations, turning off power, as we talked about electricity, improving the functionality and appearance of our schools, and fixing buildings to make them operate efficiently. A third theme under policy had a couple of sub-themes. Um, one of them was consider the funds that are spent on policy implementation, defense, and evaluation, saving on legal fees. Another sub-theme was consider the time and energy spent on policy feedback. Also, um, it's mostly about time. The fourth theme, reducing transportation costs, uh, was around eliminating buses for optional programs. And then the fifth theme was limiting funds for, uh, trustees, reducing subsidies, international trips, cutting trustee salaries. So, those are present in appendix A. For the staff results, uh, similar themes, there were three of them, efficient staffing of the school and the board, school, uh, effec- efficient school operations, and limiting funds for trustees. Very similar, uh, sub-themes under number one, reassessing school and board staff positions, uh, eliminating or reducing administrators' pay, eliminating nonessential positions outside of schools. Second sub-theme was reassess our training sessions so that, um, they're either scheduled, uh, or they're not, they're paid, they're, when they're paid or voluntary. Another theme was reduce printing costs, stop using color photocopying or paper that's sent home, less paper, use more digital resources, and managing consumables more efficiently, um, school supplies, art supplies, et cetera. And the last one was limiting funds for, uh, trustees. Uh, in, in, also in the appendix is every single response. So, we've included everything that came in for both the, uh, parent and, um, and staff survey. So, um, Chair, I'd be happy to take any questions trustees may have.
Question, uh, Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Perhaps a, a thank you to you, Chair Marai, for, for implementing this through the, the, the will of the board. Um, disappointing to see the, the low, uh, response rate despite the, uh, the good efforts to, uh, to get it out to, to parents. I saw it several times. And I, I do take a note from our, from our, our department that says, these results are not representative of the entire parent community, also for the, the staff community, and should be interpreted with caution. So, uh, I don't know where we go with these, but the question to the director is, did you or your staff see anything in there that you hadn't thought of that, that could be implemented i- i- as a way of cost savings?
We talked about the printing costs and, uh, we talked about how we could save both at the board and at the school, um, because that is quite a large, large amount of money. Um, reducing staff, I mean, we're, we look, always look at that of how do we operate in a lean environment, but we definitely did look at, uh, printing costs and, and moving forward.
Trustee Row.
Thank you. And, and in particular on the, the parental response regarding, uh, supply teachers a- and, and the cost there. Are there opportunities, as suggested, to have someone other than, uh, a full, a full-time teacher attend the, the class rather than paying, paying that, those rates?
You mean like a qualified teacher replacing an, a, a, an unqualified or a teacher replacing a staff member who's out for professional development?
If a teacher is out for a sick day, is there, is it a requirement in the contract to be, be replaced by a teacher or can they be replaced by someone else in the classroom?
No, they, we always try to have a qualified, certified teacher through the Ontario College. There were times, as you know, uh, last year when we had to, uh, get letters of permission from the college for teachers, for, for people who have some French background, just to, to hold over some, uh, places where we were unable to fill with a qualified teacher. But, um, this year, I believe we're in good shape. Correct, Mr. O'Hara?
Yeah. Um, thank you, uh, through the chair. Uh, we, we do have obligations to replace teachers with qualified occasional teachers when we can find them. Um, it's only if, uh, we're in a situation where we can't find qualified teachers that we can then go and look at qualified persons. And that would be both, uh, whether you're talking about permanent positions, whether you're talking about long-term positions, or whether you're talking about absences. So, um, you know, we, we do not have flexibility outside of, we've exhausted everything reasonable to find qualified teachers for those assignments. Thank you.
It's te- it's ten o'clock. We'll just ask for a motion to go past and, uh, also promise Diane that we get through everything we go. So, don't, uh, uh, Trustee In Tomasi. Okay. Seconded by Trustee Danko. All in favor? Great. Okay. Who was, uh, next? Uh, sorry, Trustee Row, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to, uh, address the, um, point about, um, maintenance of the buildings, um, and just to mention this in relationship to, to our budget, um, for several years, we, we cut, um, maintenance in our buildings and deferred it and deferred it and deferred it, uh, in, in, in an effort to, um, balance the budget, I believe. Um, and so, we've got to catch up with that. And, uh, and, and that's, ends up saving us money if we keep on top of the ma- on top of the maintenance. So, and, and of course, it's appreciated by the parents and the community. So, so taking that, that point that, that we shouldn't be trying to nickel and dime the upkeep of the buildings, we need to, to, to maintain them to the best standard possible and, and, and it shows. We have, we have good-looking buildings and, you know, as we all know, the ministry says our buildings aren't decrepit enough to get extra money.
Trastee Danko.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Related to that point that Trastee Rose brought up, I believe we were in an operating deficit around the time when full-day kindergarten, when we, we did a more aggressive pace of implementing full-day kindergarten at this board than we were required to. So we did defer maintenance during some of those years when we had operating deficits. But as far as I know, we've, we've caught up with most of our facilities in terms of those maintenances we didn't, that we deferred. Maybe facilities could correct me if I'm wrong, but...
Excellent. And the, the only thing I would just, just comment, just two things. I, I think three hundred and fifty-eight respondents is actually pretty significant from the surveys we put out as a board. I think you look at the long-term capital plan, I think a lot of interest in savings and efficiencies and, you know, if there's even a couple ideas that you take from this is great and I think it's good that it's, the motion was passed to be on an annual basis too. So I think that, that helps and highlights this for the community going forward. Sorry, Trastee.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. One more point, the, there, I believe there was a scheduled increase in the trustee honorarium. Did I miss that or has it happened yet or can we, is that still upcoming or what's the status of that?
Yes, it's, it's part of the, the allocation and it will be for December first. So yes, it's, it increases the base. I believe it was four hundred dollars per, per trustee. The base. The addition, the way the trustee calculation is, is completed, so it's six hundred dollars, I believe, to per trustee and then the additional portions are based on enrollment growth. So there's two, two of those parameters that will increase the trustee honor area.
Thank you. Okay. No. Hey. Please go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to add that, well, we do have a number of maintenance items in our backlog right now. We're constrained at this time by our staff, so we, we only have so many staff and so many projects we can execute per year. We have a number of new growth projects as well. So I think we're, I think we're in good shape as far as our backlog. There's definitely more we can do, but I mean, like any, any house that you own, you don't fix it all every year. You're going to have to prioritize those projects and fix them over a long-term plan, which is what we have our long-term renewal plan for.
Thank you very much. There's no further comments. We'll go to ten point eight, notice of motion. Please, Trastee Danko.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Ministry of Education guidelines are moving towards a requirement of two percent of provincial allocation to be maintained in the operating working funds reserve and whereas the HCDSB Treasury is currently striving to achieve this target over the next five to seven years, it resolves that the HCDSB twenty eighteen, nineteen budget estimates bring the operating reserve to amount of at least four point eight million or about one point two percent of HCDSB's provincial allocation.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous items are there minutes for the SEAC meeting of April twenty-third, OCSCA twenty nineteen AGM resolutions, eleven point two, correspondence twelve point one, twelve point two, and twelve point three that you could read over in our annual agenda packages. We don't have any, do we do have an open, we do have a question? Please, yeah.
To you, Mr. Chair. Mr. O'Brien, Mr. O'Brien has submitted an open question, which says, "Our community has recently embraced the teaching on cooperation in evil. Knowing that Sick Kids Hospital performs human embryonic stem cell research, would you still support funding for this, knowing that they do something that is evil? I would like to hear from all trustees."
So traditionally, this is, you know, this is used, open questions are used for a response from the board. So what I would just suggest is, you know, it's a fair question to ask and I would suggest that you ask trustees and if you'd like a comment from the board, we can do, we can do that as well. So what do trustees want to do tonight? Would you like to? Please go ahead, Director.
I could send this question to each trustee and/or at the will of the board, however you want to handle that.
How would, how would trustees like to deal with this? We can get back to you, each, each of us? Does that work? Okay. Okay, sounds good. Okay, thank you very much for that. Any other, there's nothing, we're going to go actually in camera. Resolution on absentees, we don't need any. Okay, well, yeah, Diane was here. And I'll ask Germaine to close in prayer, so a motion to adjourn, please. Trastee Quinn, seconded by Trastee Carabella. All in favor? And Trastee Tritz, could you please end with a prayer?
Good word in heaven, call the name. By whom you come, that will be done, unearthed as dust in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
So, yeah, so we're, we'll continue in camera if we...